I'm Adam Killit. I am the publisher of The Alameda Post. I hope all of you have visited our site and check our site every day for news. If you don't, we are a new website that started beginning of this year. So I'm incredibly proud of the fact that within nine months, here we are as a part of the conversation of what's going on in the city. And I'm really glad you could all be here with us today. So I'd like to thank the candidates for coming today. Unfortunately, Paul Buesterian emailed me this morning, and he has COVID. And so he wisely chose to stay home. And so we thank him for his forbearance, and we're sorry he couldn't be here. He will be provided the questions that are being asked this afternoon. And when we publicize and post the forum video, we'll include his written answers as well, so that you can hear from him since he can't be here today. I hope also that you have seen our election page on the website. This election is an important one, and local media has not traditionally been very interested in local elections. And I personally think that our elections are very important. It's where you choose who's going to be running the city and representing your views. I had the privilege of being up here on this stage 12 years ago as a city council candidate. For those of you who don't remember, I came in seventh out of eight, so you didn't miss anything. But what that did is it gave me a chance to see how the sausage was made and give me an idea of how important these forums are and how much it means for people to come out and see the candidates in person. All the other forums that have happened this year have been over Zoom, which is great and comfortable and convenient, but it doesn't give you a chance to really interact with the candidates. And also, our forum, we are the only people who are conducting a forum who are not presenting an agenda. We are not a one-issue group. We are covering all of the news of Alameda. So you'll see that there are a variety of questions that we'll be asking this afternoon. We couldn't have done this event without a lot of people helping us and supporting us. And I'd like to start by thanking the Recreation and Parks Department, who were kind enough to let us use this room this afternoon, and their staff who made it all possible. I'd also like to thank the West End Arts District. We are a nonprofit, although we are not officially a nonprofit yet because the IRS moves very, very slowly. And we applied back in March, and we are hoping to be approved by the end of the year. But until then, our fiscal sponsor is the West End Arts District. And they were nice enough to waive their fees for all the people who sponsored and contributed to this event. So I wanted to thank them for their contribution. And we had a lot of people who pitched in and sponsored to help make this event happen. I'd like to thank Catherine Beerwith and Windermere Real Estate, the Guy Blum Real Estate Group, Kyle Connor and the Alameda Theater, Dorothy Freeman, Jeannie Graham, the Reverend Nancy Joy Gordon, Rich Crinkes and Berkshire Hathaway Drysdale Properties, the Law Office of Richard H. Polson, Christopher Seawald. And I'd also like to thank the team that's helping us here today. We have, with audio, the Music Company is providing our audio services today. And Cast Away Creative is recording this event so that we can present the video on YouTube for those who couldn't join us today. I'd also like to thank Rachel Campos-Diavonoff for all of her help getting this event to happen and to manage it. She's someone who knows a lot about putting on events around Alameda and was able to help me a lot get this done, and so I'm very grateful for her help. I'd also like to thank our staff. We have a lot of people who work behind the scenes to bring you news every day and bring you our weekly newsletter and weekly podcast, our monthly history walking tours, and all of the other programming that we will be putting on. I'm really grateful. Some of them are here today, and I'm glad they could be here. And I'm grateful for all the work they've done to bring us from an idea to where we're standing today, nine months later. So as I said, we are a nonprofit, and one of the ways that we exist is by memberships. And over on the table over here next to the candidate information table, there's information about becoming a member of The Alameda Post. We operate like NPR and public television. We're not asking you to subscribe so that you get a newspaper thrown on your porch once a week. We're asking you to support a community of independent journalism and providing news of all of Alameda. We're really working hard to bring news to you from all parts of the city, from the edge of the airport all the way out to the very tip of Alameda Point, and to also cover communities that don't always get covered in the news. So we hope you'll join us, and if you can become a member, we'd appreciate your support. We're also going to be fundraising this fall. We're going to be working on some programs for larger sponsorships for the organization. If you are with a group who'd be interested in sponsoring and working with us, please come and talk to me. We'd love to work out what we could do together. And we're also going to be selling advertising on the site. So if you have a business or an activity or an event that you'd like to promote, please let us know, and we can help you get it out there in front of people. So you didn't come here to hear me talk, so I am going to now take this moment to introduce our moderator today, who is Karen Jensen. She is our reporter who covers city council and all the city boards and commissions for The Alameda Post. Karen has been a proud Alameda resident for over 25 years, and she is also the author of The Strength of Water, which is an Asian-American memoir forthcoming from Ballast Your Press. So without any further ado, I would like to hand off to Karen, and thank you again for coming today.
Thank you, Adam, and good afternoon to the candidates and to everyone here. I am honored to be here. We all appreciate how much the city council is where national issues play out at the local level. I would begin by introducing each of you. As I do so, you will each have one minute to tell us why you are the best candidate for the job. I will go in seating order, and so we begin with Mr. Jim Odie.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I want to thank The Post for putting this on. Congrats on the new venture, Adam. I think it's going to be quite successful, and you fill a gap that, you know, I think is missing here in Alameda. My name's Jim Odie. I've had the honor to serve as a council member from 2014 to 2020, and I'm asking to be re-elected back to the council this year. And I see a lot of familiar faces out here. Many of us have agreed or disagreed on different items. I think the one thing, you know, we all agree on, you know, no matter where you stand on the political spectrum or on different issues, is, you know, we all love Alameda. And in our hearts, we think this is the best place to live in the entire planet. And all we really want to do is make it a better place for ourselves, for our families, and for our descendants. So that's what I plan on doing. You'll hear some of my vision on housing, on protecting our core services, on protecting our environment, and preserving our quality of life. And I look forward to the discussion, and thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's very good to be here. In response to the question of why I think I'm the best candidate to get re-elected to city council, one reason is because my professional background is in urban planning. I worked for San Francisco Bay Conservation Development Commission. And for many years prior to that, I was an economic development consultant. So I understand how to analyze projects that come before us in an objective, neutral manner. And I'm also the best person for the council because I believe I'm independent. I take pride in the fact that I basically self-fund my campaign, so the money that you see for the most part, you know, probably 85% of it just comes from me. Doesn't mean I'm rich, but it does mean that I take seriously the importance of making independent decisions free of special interests. Finally, I also grew up in the city of Alameda. I'm proud of having been here since 1974, so I understand the importance of maintaining and fighting for our quality of life.
Time's up. Thank you. Next is Ms. Hannah Gross.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hannah Gross, and I am excited to be running for city council this year. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I grew up here, and I am running in part because I really see Alameda as a place that has an opportunity right now to be a leader in housing. It also has been a place that historically has been notorious for having such a great quality of life, and I would love to continue that. Alameda is the kind of place where we say that everyone belongs, and I think that we're moving in that direction. As somebody who grew up here and grew up poor here, a lot of issues that we talk about, about people being displaced, are very real to me and are not just theoretical. So with that said, I am really excited to be here and to talk to you all about what my vision for Alameda is, and I look forward to hearing all of your questions and being able to talk with you tonight.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Tracy Jensen.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. For those of you that I haven't met, I'm Tracy Jensen, and I'm actually, right now, I'm elected to the Alameda Healthcare District Board, so you all have put me in that position for the past eight years. And prior to that, I was elected to the school board here in Alameda for eight years. So I have a little bit of experience in running large agencies from those positions, and I'm running for the city council now because Alameda needs new leadership. I decided to run when I saw the Alameda Community Needs Assessment. The question was surveyed, Alameda residents said, more than 70% of residents said that they weren't happy with the direction that Alameda is going. So I said, wow, I have experience. I've done this. I've worked in the school district in a million-dollar, $100 million organization. I've worked for a billion-dollar organization as a leader, a trustee appointed by the Board of Supervisors with Alameda Health System. I have this experience, and I want to work with everyone in this room to get things done for Alameda.
Thank you. The next set of questions, you will each have two minutes to respond, and I will go in changing order. The question comes from our readers, and it is, "Do you support the current draft of Alameda's housing element, and will you work to ensure its certification by the state? Why or why not?" We'll begin with Ms. Gross.
So when it comes to the housing element, I absolutely support the current draft housing element. One of the things that I think has been really great to see is the input that has led to the draft housing element. And we are at the forefront in terms of the Bay Area and having a draft element that is tentatively approved. And if we actually approve that draft element, we will be in compliance with HCD, and that is something that we want. One of the reasons that we want that is so that we don't have what's going on in some of the cities in Southern California, like Santa Monica and Redondo Beach, where they're losing control of what they can actually build. And what's happening is, so there's a thing called the builder's remedy. And if you don't have a housing element that is in compliance, you are at risk of that being used, so that somebody who proposes a new development can do so without city council being able to do anything to stop that. And that can lead to, as long as there is generally 20% of affordable units in any given new build, that is the kind of thing that Alamitosans would, I think, not be happy about if we lost control of what our housing looked like and where. So I think it is absolutely imperative that we push forward and make sure that the draft housing element is approved and pushed through. The other thing about, you know, the draft housing element is it tries to remedy some of the historical inequities in Alameda and affirmatively further fair housing by building housing and upzoning throughout the city of Alameda and not just in one area. So I think it is crucial that we do that, and I would absolutely push to make that happen if I were elected.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Desog.
Well, thank you. Let me address this issue in two ways. First of all, I do not support the current draft housing element. I do not support it. And I do not support it for two reasons. First and foremost is, as a council member, my priority is to concentrate more housing at Alameda Point above the numbers that we already have. Our statewide obligation is to plan for roughly 5,300 units of housing, and currently it's being spread across the city of Alameda. Some might say, that's good. But I think that it should be concentrated at Alameda Point for basic planning reasons. Alameda Point is where we're creating an incredibly high-quality transit-oriented development, where we are implementing a variety of transit strategies from the new ferry system in place already, from a shuttle system where people only have to wait basically seven and a half minutes on average, so people would take that kind of a shuttle system. We're also implementing what's called Bus Rapid Transit, a unique bus rapid transit system. And so we're implementing the variety of strategies at Alameda Point where the impacts of housing can be best dealt with. In addition, BART over the long term would like to create a BART train through Alameda, which would go from basically downtown Oakland down maybe Webster Street and then veer towards Alameda Point in the direction of San Francisco. So another transit strategy. The factor of the matter is, I don't think, for the amount of housing that the housing element contemplates for either South Shore Shopping Center or for the Harbor Bay Shopping Center, for the amount of housing that's contemplated there, that you cannot put the type of robust transit system that we're doing already at Alameda Point. And so that's the second reason. The second reason is, I do believe that we're upzoning too much some of a lot of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Odie.
Well, thank you for that question. Housing, as far as I remember, has been like the third rail of Alameda politics, right? The thing about the housing element, and I think Hannah Gross pretty much nailed it on the head, on, you know, what our options are and what happens if we don't comply. And my understanding is that this council, not the one that I'm running to be on, but the one that we have currently seated, will be the one that votes on this and the one that votes on the zoning changes. So the question really more towards us is, would you do anything to undo it or jeopardize the approval of that housing element? And my answer to that would be no. I mean, if we do, you know, think about what would happen if a judge that really is not accountable to you all and the voters of Alameda like any of the four of us or two of the four of us would be. You know, a judge could perhaps accept an application to build at the Harbor Bay Club. And right now, that site is going to be completely off-limits for 10 years because it's not in the housing element, right? So those are the type of things we have to think about when, you know, we talk about changing the housing element or, you know, refusing to do zoning or undoing zoning. And, you know, I, you know, hear the idea that maybe we put all of it at the base, but I think, again, going back to Hannah's answer, we do have to put housing in places where we've, you know, had wrongs being done, and we have to undo those wrongs. And, you know, I kind of remember, maybe 12 or so years ago, there was a plan to put 6,000 units over at the base, and that got rejected by our voters like 85 to 15%.
And next, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. I definitely support the housing element. I'm happy to see that it's been accepted when it was delivered to Sacramento, and I think it's going to be good for Alameda. I should mention that I grew up here, and Alameda has changed since I grew up some years ago. And it's changed, I think, for the better. I think that people deserve to have housing in Alameda and that we have, this city council has done a good job under the leadership with the support of Andrew Thomas to identify the areas in Alameda where housing will be most effective. The base, I respectfully disagree that the base should be the place where all the housing is established, because, first of all, those of you who live in the West End understand that it's not easy to get on and off the island always. There may be a ferry, which is good, but if you're trying to travel in the evening or in the morning, it's a challenge. So having more housing there without an effective and established way to exit the island or enter the island is not the best idea. The second thing I want to say is that, right now, about 70% of the housing, the 5,353 units, is under development. It's been approved, and about half of it is already being built. So we're on our way. There are places in Alameda, as mentioned, South Shore and Harbor Bay Landing and Alameda Landing, where there will be housing that hasn't been there before, but that's a good thing. I think that having housing in our neighborhoods with transit accessibility, allowing homeowners, single-family homeowners, to make a duplex out of their house, which has not been allowed before, if they're in a large building, they can make it into a duplex now. And they can put an ADU. They'll have streamlined permits to do ADUs in their yard if they have a large enough yard. I think that's terrific, and I would support that, and I would actually give incentives to Alameda single-family homeowners to do things like that to improve housing, especially for low-income Alamitosans.
Our next question is, "Describe your personal leadership style. Tell us about an inspiration or hero that led you to stand for office." And we'll begin with Councilmember Desog.
Well, on the first question of personal style, I think my personal style is to analyze the staff recommendation. Take a look at it in terms of, you know, what are the professional standards by which certain strategies or policies that are being implemented? What are the professional standards by which we evaluate it? And then, you know, talk with our city staff members to further understand some elements of it. I also listen to the community to understand what concerns that they have, because I don't believe that, you know, that city council members are there to necessarily rubber-stap every decision that city staff makes. Take, for example, the case of the Grand Street project that was much talked about, where we're building a new bikeway path through and also safer, slower streets up and down Grand Street from Otis Drive to Ensonal Avenue. Staff made a recommendation, their main recommendation, which, you know, on its surface was good. But on the other hand, there was a lot of concerns by the residents, not just on Grand Street, but throughout the neighborhoods in close proximity. And so as a council member, you not only have to take into account your professional judgment and your background in understanding, you know, what works and what doesn't work, but you also have to listen and work with the residents, because if the residents have some valid concerns, that can professionally also work, then we also need to be flexible enough to work with the residents. And so in the case of Grand Street, that's what I did. In terms of inspirations, you know, I mean, I certainly was inspired by, you know, individuals like Lyndon B. Johnson, but mainly the books written by Robert Caro on Lyndon B. Johnson and the way in which he tried to transform our nation.
And next, Ms. Jensen.
I am, I'll start with my inspiration. My career has been spent working with seniors. I worked for the Medicare program for many years in Washington, D.C., and in Maryland, the state of Maryland, before moving home to Alameda and becoming the senior services administrator in the city of Oakland. And I did that kind of not entirely because of my personal hero, but my personal hero, I would say, is Frances Perkins. And for those of you who don't know, she was the woman who worked for Roosevelt, who started, she was one of the first women, she was the first woman cabinet leader, and she started the Social Security program. It was because of her that we have Social Security in the United States. And so I just kind of thought that she really was tremendous, a tremendous role model. And so I try and look to her when I think about hard things that have to be done, especially for vulnerable populations. And with regard to my leadership style, as I mentioned, I've been a government servant my entire career. I've worked in Washington. I work in Oakland now, and I've done the reports, as Councilmember Desog mentioned. I've been the staff person that does the reports to the city council in Oakland or to the Health and Human, Health Committee in Washington. And when you go to that committee, you're using the information that the leaders, legislators, have given you to do the report. And so my leadership style has been to do that, to do the report, to provide the information. And my leadership style as an elected official and as a person who's appointed to the Alameda Health System Board, the Billion Dollar Board, is to listen to staff. If I've given them some guidance, and they're coming back with a report and with the information that I've asked for, then I'm going to listen to them. I'm not going to change my mind in the middle of the process and say, well, that wasn't really what I wanted, because staff needs to be respected. And to that end, my other promise to you is that I will hire a city manager. I've done that several times in different positions, and I'll do that in Alameda.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Gross.
I just want to say I appreciate that you brought up Frances Perkins. I went to Mount Holyoke, as did Frances Perkins, so that made me really happy to hear. But when it comes to people that have inspired me, I'm going to start there. One of the people who inspired me to run actually is a good friend of mine who lives in Texas, in Denton County, and she ran for Congress four years ago, five years ago, after never having done anything in government. She was a teen parent. She was working in technology and decided, hey, I'm going to run for office because I'm not liking the direction of things in my hometown, in my district. And the person who has been in office for the last 20 years has not made people's lives better in any way, and I think that I could do differently. She ended up winning her primary as a first-time candidate. She ended up, as a first-time candidate, winning 35% of the vote in the general election against an incumbent who had been in office for over 20 years, and that was deeply inspiring to me. As a leader myself, I am somebody who is willing to listen to other people. I am somebody who can build consensus. I am somebody who understands how to remove my own ego from a situation so that I can actually, you know, work together with people. I can work with literally anyone. I am not somebody who's, you know, creating conflict. I'm not somebody who is leaning into conflict. And I think that Alameda is a city that needs that especially. Our entire country has been dealing with, I think, a lot of leadership that are, you know, infighting, and that is not productive. And I would like to see Alameda be a place where leaders who care about everyone, all of their constituents, and can actually work together to get things accomplished, even with differing opinions, is something that is the norm.
Thank you. Mr. Odie.
Okay, thank you. As far as being inspired this time, you know, I'm kind of inspired by a lot of folks that are facing trouble, especially facing displacement, you know, our tenants, our renters. You know, I got a nickname called Just Cause Jim because I fought so hard to protect our tenants and our homeless. You know, we've been fighting a battle for a homeless resource center over on the West End for close to three years now. But as far as being inspired the first time, I mean, I would have to go back and say, you know, Attorney General Rob Bontas, you know, I was his campaign manager. I knocked on every door with him when he ran 12 years ago, and I got to hear the concerns of everyday Alamitosans, and, you know, that had a lot of impact on me. Then when he went to the Assembly, I got to work side by side in his office and be inspired by him. And, you know, seeing the good work that an elected official can do after hearing everyone's problems and issues inspire me. And, you know, one thing Rob said when he got elected is, you know, I don't really care, you know, where the idea comes from. If it's a good idea, I'm going to be behind it. And that's kind of what I did when I was on council. I was happy to collaborate and work with all of my colleagues. I see Trish Spencer out there. You know, we worked together, and we got cannabis policy in Alameda. You know, and that was quite an accomplishment, right? I was honored to work with my former colleague Frank Matarresi on getting a menthol ban, a flagrant cigarette ban, in Alameda to help keep our kids healthy. I was honored to work here with my former colleague, Councilmember Desog, on, you know, some of his transportation ideas, which, you know, generated a lot of good for the city, as well as Deepay Park, which is something that, you know, I want to prioritize. I was happy to work with Malia Vella on many issues. I was happy to work with John Knox White on things like bringing sensible gun regulation to Alameda. And, you know, that's what I would do. I would be really honored to go back and work with all of my colleagues.
Our next question is, "What is your view of how city council should work with the city manager?" And we'll start with Ms. Jensen.
My view is that the city council needs a city manager. Unfortunately, that's been a challenge for this city because we have not had a steady city manager for some period of time. We've had, I think, eight acting and permanent city managers in the past 12, 13 years since Anne Marie Galant was here. And that's not a good way to run a city. That probably results in people not being, thinking that Alameda's going in the right direction because there isn't leadership. The city manager is the leader of the city staff. There are, in Alameda, there's about 50 full-time, well, more than that, but there's about 500 full-time city staff in Alameda, and they need to have a leader. They need to have someone, a city manager, that they can go to when there's issues, as do the department managers. And so I'm just pointing this out to say that that's where the buck stops, and that's what Alameda City Council and the mayor need to do, is to hire an effective city manager, a professional city manager, and give that city manager the resources needed to do their job without interference. And I've done this. I've done this. I've hired two CEOs as an appointee of the Board of Supervisors on Alameda Health System, two CEOs to run a 1.3 Health System, two CEOs to run a $1.3 billion organization. I've hired two superintendents when I was on the school board, two superintendents to make sure the educational programs were effective in Alameda and to provide leadership. And that's what we need to do here, and that's what I'll do as a city council member.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Odie.
Repeat the question again.
Yes. What is your view of how city council should work with the city manager?
Okay, so I'm acutely aware of this issue and, you know, what we're supposed to do and not supposed to do. The city council basically has three reportees, right? The city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And that's the people that we hire, that's the people that we're supposed to deal with and interface with. You know, I was honored to be one of the 5-0 majority, to hire Eric Levitt. I've been off for two years, so I'm not sure why he left, but, you know, he left unfortunately. I know we had an interim come in after him, and the public spin was he left for personal reasons, so I got to believe that that's the case, right? And then Nancy Bronstein, who's an amazing member of our staff, is retiring. I mean, I'm not going to deprive her of her right to retire after a long public service career. So perhaps this council will hire a new city manager before the new council comes in, perhaps they won't, I don't know. I'm not involved in the discussions, I'm not in the closed session, and as the law requires, nobody's telling me what's going on. So maybe they'll reach consensus, maybe they won't, I don't know. But I'll be happy to work with whoever is hired.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Desog.
Well, great. Oh, okay. Oh, great. So just quick background, Eric Levitt left the city of Alameda because he found what he thought to be a better job in the city of Fullerton. So that's why he left. He wasn't pushed out or anything like that. And then his immediate assistant was a short-term assistant because he also found a city manager job in the city of Pleasanton. And the next city manager, interim city manager, Dirk Brazil, unfortunately, he left because he had, he realized he had to spend more time with his ill mother. And so that's why we have Nancy Bronstein. So that's why, there was no negative turmoil that had let, that's behind their recent shifts. It's just one of those things that happens. But I think the key thing is, not just myself, but I think all of us as council members, you know, we are working closely with our city manager because we understand that by city charter, it's the city manager who runs the day-to-day activities of city hall. The city council, including the mayor, we provide policy guidance as to the direction that we hope the city takes, but ultimately, it's the city manager. And my experience has been that, for the most part, I personally, you know, have worked very closely respecting the city charter provisions with regard to the responsibilities of the city manager. I think other things that we are involved in, where as the city council, we're also, by city charter, the entity that is in charge of the department heads, the orientation of the department heads, what it is that they should be doing. That's actually our responsibility per the city charter. So that's, so in terms of working with our department heads, we certainly are, have worked closely with them as well. But for the most part, it's working with the city manager, respecting their professional experience that they've brought, and I'm sure that we will find another city manager that would be very good.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Gross.
So in terms of working with the city manager, I think it is important that we, as council members, in part, because council is a part-time position, respect and understand that the city manager is responsible for running our city. And with that said, we need to make sure that we are not making that job more challenging for them, that we are, you know, replying to them as necessary, that we are providing them necessary information and policy. But also that we are understanding that we are not to be directing them on everything that they should be doing. I think that's really crucial. In terms of, you know, day-to-day, I think it is important that city council is, I've lost my train of thought, I don't remember what else I was going to say. But just in general, would work well with the city manager and making sure that they had what they needed. I do think it's imperative that we hire a city manager as a city that is not run actually by council. It is crucial that we have somebody in place who can kind of steady the ship. I think that it inspires confidence in the citizens when we actually have that. So the fact that we have not had consistent leadership over the last few years has made it a little bit tough. But, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, you have to deal with, especially in times like the pandemic, where, you know, everything was kind of in upheaval, is how do you respond in times of crisis? And I think that we've overall done a good job, but I think that it would be steadier if we had somebody in that role right now.
Thank you. The next question is, do you think automated license plate readers are effective in fighting crime? And do you support increased or reduced automated surveillance? And we'll start with Mr. Odie.
That's a good question. It was before I got on, so it may have been 2012, 2013, when we implemented the first automated license plates readers on police vehicles, right? So how that works is the police will drive around, and then if they get a ping, because this thing is like searching and scanning the license plates, it'll tell you that the car is stolen or otherwise wanted, or somehow a car of interest. So the purpose there is to really help deter, or at least solve, potential car theft crimes, right? The current city council, I think, approved, was it 35 or 36 additional cameras? Now, there's a trial period and a pilot, and a study, we're going to see how effective they are. I'm not quite sure how effective they are, but, you know, perhaps, you know, I can be enlightened on that. Because really, what they're doing is they're taking a picture of a license plate going in and out of the city. So unless a police officer is right there, I'm curious on how you're going to solve a crime or catch a criminal, because by the time you get to the bridge, you know, or get to the tube, you know, that car's going to be gone, right? But, you know, again, I'll be open-minded and listen to whatever feedback comes back. You know, the one thing that concerned me when this first came to us was the sharing of data. You know, you've got to remember, a few years back, we had a different president who was not as respectful of people, was, you know, not as respectful of folks that, you know, may be driving to an abortion clinic, or that might be undocumented, right? So the idea of sharing that data with federal agencies or ICE, I think, was important to me. So those are some of the things I'll think about and listen to when it comes back and we hear a report back. And I really would be curious to see, you know, how effective it really is in preventing crimes, you know, such as, you know, porch thefts and things like that, that people are concerned about.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Gross.
So when it comes to license plate readers, I am torn on them. I think it is one of those measures that tends to make people feel safer, but I am not convinced of their efficacy in actually making us safer and making crime rates go down. Like Jim mentioned, I would like to see the data in Alameda specifically, because each community is different in how things actually play out. With that said, we do have an opportunity now to see if that is a thing that does deter crime. There are certain things that I know people are very concerned about. There are, you know, things like catalytic converter thefts, there are things like people getting things stolen off of their porch. I know a lot of people get their cars stolen in Alameda. Some are recovered, some are not. But I think that the vast majority of crimes in Alameda are not necessarily likely to be solved with license plate readers. However, I am open to seeing what the actual data is in Alameda before saying yes or no they should exist, yes or no we should have more, yes or no we should have less. So that is my general feeling about license plate readers.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. I, first of all, let me just say that I agree, I think that public service, public safety should be given the resources they need to do their job, just a bottom line. And we are a city, as all cities, that relies on public safety. That's what, one of the main roles, that's the most, most people who work for Alameda and the most, the biggest part of the budget goes to public safety, the general fund goes to public safety. So we should provide the resources necessary when asked, but I think I also agree that this council's taken a cautious approach to see what the data is when the data comes in from the license plate readers that are already in place. But here's the thing, there's no overall policy regarding license plate readers or public safety in general. There's no equity, diversity, and inclusion policy for the city of Alameda. These are just kind of piecemeal. We'll look at the license plate readers and say, well, maybe we'll get some data back that says, well, they're being used to stop brown-skinned people more often, or people from the West End, or Pacific Islanders, or young men, or something like that. But what will we do with that data? There's, the city of Alameda has no, no plan, no strategy, no equity and inclusion strategy to think about and put in place all of this data that they're getting to look at things like crimes, to look at things like policing, to look at housing, to look at all of the things that the city does through one lens. And that's, that's what I want to do. That's what I want to see in Alameda. And so with regard to license plate readers, or housing, or access to schools, or parks, or whatever it might be, let's develop an equity, diversity, and inclusion policy first, and then talk about all these other things.
Thank you.
On this topic, I want to hearken back to the earlier question about, you know, the city manager and the role of the city council in working with the city manager. And I want to hearken back to that because, you know, my background is in urban planning, you know, that's why I have my master's in city and regional planning, that's what I do for work and that I've always done. And what that means is I don't have the policing background in terms of license plate readers, yea or nay. But what I do have is respect for the city manager's office and respect for the department heads who she or he hires, including the police chief. So it's not just this police chief, Chief Nishant Joshi, but prior police chiefs, like Chief Paul Brerary, prior police chiefs who had made the professional judgment that, whether they are fixed license plate readers or license plate readers on cars, that they made the professional judgment and recommendation that this is what is needed for the city of Alameda. It's not the perfect tool, but it is one tool in an effort to combat crime. Will it stop crime in real time on the spot? Maybe, maybe not. But maybe it will gather the information that allows us to know who had done, who was in close proximity to a certain area where a crime occurred, and that the license plate readers will then give us the information, give the police department the information to follow up and do the investigation that they've needed. So I think for me, the key thing is to rely on the professional judgment from our city staff, whether it's our city manager or whether it's our chief of police. But also rely on my background to be able to probe whether or not, you know, the issues that they're pursuing make sense, based upon my own research. And because of that, I do support license plate readers.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your knowledge of Alameda's public art program? In which ways do you think public art is important to our city? And we begin with Ms. Gross.
I actually don't have much knowledge of Alameda's public art program, but I do think that it is crucial. I did a fellowship two years ago now where we partnered with an organization called CAST, and I was working with them for a year. CAST is Community Art Stabilization Trust, and it's an organization out of San Francisco, but they also do some work in Oakland. But that organization does work to make space permanently affordable for artists, both to perform in and to create art. And they're moving into housing in the next few years. But I think that art is essential to life, and I think that, you know, having beautiful spaces in Alameda that are representative of, like, you know, the talent throughout the Bay Area, and the fact that Myalyn is just down the road, you know, a school named for an artist, and it started off as an art magnet program, I think that that's crucial to have that in the city.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Odie.
Well, thank you, that's a good question. I never remember which one is which, left brain, right brain, right? But, you know, my training is as an accountant, a finance person, an attorney, so that's like the opposite side of the artistic side, right? So I don't know which side is which. So I really appreciate, you know, when we can promote the arts, because, you know, most of the things I do are kind of the opposite side of the brain, and you kind of need that, right, that enjoyment. I know we had different required fees that developers would pay into the Public Art Fund, and that we would use that at various developments. I mean, you can see it all across town, you know, up by Target, Willie Stargell Avenue, over on Buena Vista and other places. And then what we did when I was on council was we changed that, so it wasn't more than just physical art, right? Like statues or things like that. So we were able to use some of those funds on things like rhythmic and some performance art, and I think that really helps. You know, if we don't have a vibrant arts community in our city, you know, then people end up being a bunch of, you know, whatever it is, right-brained or left-brained people like me, right? And that can be kind of boring, you know, it's not very cultural. And, you know, I don't remember if any changes have been made in the last two years, but I know there was a big proposal that we had to kind of overhaul that, and I think it kind of put on the shelf. And, you know, thanks for the question, and I think it's something that needs to be, you know, revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Councilmember Desog.
Great. At its core, yes, the way in which our public arts is financed is through development projects of a certain size, pay a certain fee into the projects. As former Councilmember Odie had indicated, prior, it used to be for the most part for fixed structural type of art, but now we're even supporting performance art. And I really enjoy the direction of the, of the public arts projects. When you look at the different projects that have come online, especially on the Gene Sweeney Park, I mean, there's some great projects that we can all take pride in. Or when we did the opening of the Alameda Point Waterfront Park, there was that great series of performances that was done. You know, that was funded by the Alameda Public Arts Project. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I think other elements that we can certainly, you know, continue to work to make sure that our public arts program represents a wide variety of cultures and voices and peoples of different physical abilities. So there are certain areas where we can certainly improve it even more. For me, you know, the arts are important, you know, growing up in the city of Alameda, you know, I had the opportunity of playing in the Alameda Youth Orchestra. I was a violin player in the late 1970s, and we would play at Alameda High. So, you know, and my younger sister sang opera, and my older sister used to teach piano. So my background is from an arts background. There was a picture of me in the Alameda Time Star with my violin, way back in 1979, I think it was. So it is, you know, public arts is important because at the end of the day, you know, these types of displays say as much about who we are than the buildings that we build or the parks that we create.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Jensen.
As Councilmember Desog mentioned, art is important. And he mentioned being able to play the violin in public schools, and that's, that's great, and that's, that's a good thing, that our public schools have some, still have some music programs available. And we, we have at Myalyn, as we heard, we have some great art programs there, including the Alameda Music Project, which provides after-school support to lower-income, and any kids actually who want to learn to play the cello or the guitar or other instruments. And it's a tremendous success. I think that public art is important, but it's also important to have art programs funded by the city. The, the, Alameda has faction, or, there's an art space, now I'm forgetting the name of it, on Lincoln Avenue, that's a makers, a makers site for, yeah. And it's, it's doing very well, and they've been there for five years, and they're not, they're doing it without they're doing it without some direct support from the city, and maybe they should have more direct support, like, like other art, art organizations have. I think that we should, that the city should also have done more to support the transition of the Carnegie Library. There was a huge group of people who were ready to work together to make a public art space in the library, and that kind of fell through. It was, they tried hard, and they tried to work with the city, and there was issues of a project labor agreement, but the city wasn't really supporting them, in my opinion. And, and I was watching that project try and go through. I think that now the city, I will support them, the project that's being planned for Alameda Point, the art project, art, the performance art space for Alameda Point, which will be a tremendous, tremendous value for the West End and for the entire city. So, what I'd like to see the city be doing is to be thinking about art, and to be thinking about it again through an equity, diversity, and inclusion lens. As council member Desog mentioned, let's think about providing art and getting art into everyone's house in Alameda.
Thank you. Our next question is, how has climate change affected Alameda beyond rising sea levels? And what would you do to protect Alameda from further climate change? We'll begin with council member Desog.
Well, great. You know, I, as a council member, supported, along with the other council members, the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. So, when you look at the over 150-page document, you'll see on page 21, that there's a resolution that has all of our votes. So, and that's important, because the Climate Action Resiliency Plan, among other things, identifies 11, what I'm going to call hotspots, 11 areas in the city of Alameda that are most vulnerable to either sea level rise or groundwater intrusion. And that we have strategies in place for those 11 areas. I think one of the most exciting strategies that we have in place is for the part of the beach from roughly the post office towards Grand Street along the beach, the possibility of transforming that kind of into a tidal marsh. So, you know, you've got the, you've got the, where Broadway turns into Shoreline Drive, you've got the, the Bird Sanctuary there, that's kind of a tidal marsh. So, so, and the reason why, this is long-term, by the way, this isn't, you know, right now. So, the reason why we're looking at a tidal marsh in that area is because the tidal marshes better handle oncoming of, of the waters, i.e. the rising of the tide. And the reason why it's important to mention the tidal marsh, because that is a natural defense mechanism as opposed to hardscape, which is seawalls. Seawalls, while we, while, I think seawalls work in some places, we also have to remember the problem with seawalls is that it, it, then it just kind of moves water around. So, where the seawall isn't, you know, the water's going to inundate. The other issue quickly about climate change, isn't just, the issue isn't just properties along the waterfront, but it's also properties throughout Alameda because of groundwater and how that comes in
Thank you.
And deals with all of Alameda.
Sorry, your time's up. Thank you. Next, Ms. Gross.
So, Alameda is not just at risk of things that you mentioned, like sea level rise. Alameda is dealing with what the rest of California is dealing with as climate has been changing. We are dealing with the effects of wildfires, and that is something that, you know, you can't just put a Band-Aid on. And so, we need to be thinking long-term, and I am very proud of the Climate Resiliency Plan that Alameda does have. We need to be thinking long-term about things that are going to affect all of us in Alameda, but also more broadly of the Bay Area. There are things that you can do in terms of electrification, electrification of buildings, electrification of cars, and having greater infrastructure in place for that. Currently, we do not have great charging infrastructure for those people who do have electric vehicles. And as we're moving in that direction, and as there are state mandates that will come into effect about the kind of cars that can be purchased and manufactured and sold in California, we also need to have the infrastructure built up around that. I would like to see charging stations throughout, but also continuing to incentivize people who are transitioning to electric for cars, which is not the only thing. I think the other thing we also need to be thinking about is how to get people out of single occupancy vehicles. And one of the ways you do that is by creating more robust infrastructure for transportation, public transportation, but also active transportation, where there are no emissions, right? If you are riding a bike that is, assuming it's not an electric bike, you know, you're powering it with your, you know, your own body, and that is the kind of thing, having active transportation. And there is an active transportation plan that is, you know, currently being reviewed. Please weigh in on that. But those are the kinds of things that I would like to see Alameda doing more of.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jensen.
I agree with Hannah, and a lot of things she said that, but transportation and climate change go together. And Alameda has adopted the climate, the resiliency policy, and in 2020, I believe, there was a transportation policy adopted as well. And in both of those policies that the city council outlined and expressed an interest in doing some things that haven't yet been done. For example, to add bike share to Alameda, to do more outreach, to advise people about, about other modes of transportation besides, besides taking a single fam, single-person car, to, to establish a free shuttle, which I think was established and then was just recently stopped. But there's been a number of things, both in the transportation and the climate resiliency policy, that really have, they're great ideas, but they haven't been completed. And so, I think, I agree with Hannah, that there needs to be some incentives. There needs to be incentives to businesses, to increase electric use and, and stop, reduce natural gas use. There needs to be incentives for homeowners to do the same, to, to transition from natural gas to electricity. And there needs to be more charging stations. Alameda has over 50% of our residents are renters, and a lot of them are multifamily residences, houses or buildings that are old, and they don't have either the electric capacity to do a charging station, or they don't have, I mean, that's really the, the basic thing. So, we need to have incentives to give all homeowners the option to have, establish a charging station, especially in multifamily homes, and especially in parts of Alameda where the buildings are older and the, the people are perhaps not as, they, they might buy a used Prius rather than a Tesla. Those are where we need to start.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Odie.
Thank you. You know, I think Tony and Hannah pretty much answered the gist of the question on, you know, kind of the details, so I'm not going to repeat what they said, except to say that I agree with all of the items they mentioned. You know, this is an area where, when I was on council, I, I was a leader. You know, if you remember a few years back, council member Matt Aresi said, "We need to do this climate action plan, this CARP plan, early than we originally planned." And he pushed that, and the council thankfully approved it, and we got it done sooner, and we were able to get grant money also to make sure we got it done. So, we have this, this, this CARP, but it really doesn't do any use if it just sits on the shelf, right? So, what we really need to make sure we do, and what I promise to do, is make sure we fully fund the positions that we need to implement those projects, right? So, and also the CARP talked a lot about equity, you know, some of the things I think Hannah mentioned, you know, wildfires. You know, I'm pretty privileged, I can turn on my air filter, shut up my windows, you know, if there's smoke, you know, but a homeless person can't do that. They're exposed to the elements. Someone in a rental space that doesn't have that luxury can't do that. So, those are the type of things I think we need to think about as we do CARP. You know, as far as specific plans, you know, I've always been a big proponent of a wetlands mitigation bank at Alameda Point, and somehow, it's a little bit complicated, so I guess it's not something we do. But, you know, there is something we can do right early, and I think somebody talked about marshlands, and maybe it was Mr. Desog. You know, Deepay Park, if anyone knows about that project, that's to take concrete runways, destroy it, and turn it into wetlands. And it exactly has the impact that council member Desog described. Can you imagine what that would be like? That, that's kind of a groundbreaking, historical, worldwide project that we could have right here in Alameda, and I was proud to, you know, take the baton from Frank Matt Aresi, and I will continue to fight for that project if I'm elected.
Thank you. Because we have one fewer candidate with us today, we have time for a bonus question or two. So, the, the next question is, what strategies would you like to employ to address homelessness in Alameda? And we'll begin with Ms. Jensen.
I would like to, the, the main policy that I'd like to establish to address homelessness is to build the Wellness Center at Crab Cove. I think that's the thing that Alameda needs to do, and it needs to get moving. I, as a matter of fact, this morning, I spent some time with a friend of mine at the Aeolian Yacht Club, who's a nurse for lifelong medical, and unfortunately, she was all excited, and she wanted to talk about the Wellness Center, and I had to let her know that it was being postponed again to address a, a legal challenge. And I, I find that just, just really unfortunate. I work with seniors, and I see seniors that are homeless. And, by the way, if a senior, if a person becomes homeless after the age of 50, that means, and, and studies have shown, a recent study showed, that they lose 20 to 30 years of their life. If you, if I become homeless right now, that means that I'm not going to live, I'm going to live less, 20 years less, because I become homeless. Seniors are at such high risk of, of becoming homeless because of changing demographics, because of the, the, the fact that they're often renters, and they're, they're may not be able to continue to pay the higher rents in the Bay Area. And we need to have the Wellness Center address the homeless problem for seniors, and work with other homeless agencies to support, support facilities and support transitional housing in Alameda for younger residents that are homeless as well. There are people in Alameda that, that have been not able to find shelter, and I'm not exactly sure, I'm not, I'm not, I, I'm pretty sure that the city isn't reaching out like Oakland does with a, a mobile crisis unit or those types of activities to meet and address the needs of these people. And I'm also sure that there's no, I'll say it again, equity, diversity, and inclusion policy standard for the city of Alameda that would make sure that these people have the resources they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council member Desog.
Well, great. In terms of addressing homelessness, first and foremost, I think, I'm proud about the city council, including myself, where we seized the opportunity when the federal government provided us a lot of money, that we then used in an order to buy and, and create a home, which will be done, a homeless facility, a facility for the homeless right by the College of Alameda. Originally, we were going to take the money to buy a motel by the Oakland Yacht Club in Alameda. But instead of doing that, we, we decided to take the money to create a facility right there on the, what's called Fifth Street, that, the new Fifth Street. So, so we've seized that opportunity. Other things that, as council member, that, that I have done is, when it comes to making available certain services, teams that go out and work with people who are homeless and providing, you know, connections to, to services, we made sure to fund that. One of my pet projects that I would love to do in the future, if it comes out, is to make housing available for especially teen mothers who are homeless or at risk of homeless. And, you know, and I, I've raised this issue twice with regard to available housing at Big Whites. And the reason why I've raised this is because that, this is actually something that I had supported way back a long time ago, and, and we worked with a school district to actually create a, such a program over at nearby McKinley Park. This was a long time ago. So, I kind of felt like I want to do that again. But, but one more thing, really quickly. There is one policy issue, though, that, that, that is outstanding, where I do differ with my council members, where I, we have what's called a homeless-first strategy, where, where we make available services, but we don't require services, and I'm concerned about the homeless
Thank you.
Housing-first strategy.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Odie.
Well, thank you. Well, I think the first thing we can do is try to make sure people don't become homeless in the first place, right? A lot of our tenants, you know, are facing that real prospect, and more of them would be facing it without just cause eviction controls or without rent control or, or price increases. So, I mean, to me, that's, that's important, you know, and you have folks, you know, that may not be living on the street, but they're living in the car, or living on somebody's couch, or, you know, moving around from place to place. So, I think making sure we don't weaken those, and making sure we strengthen our, our tenant protections, I think is critical. You know, as far as people that actually are homeless, you know, first of all, they need services, second of all, they need temporary shelter, and third of all, they need permanent housing. And I'm glad Tony brought up the Bottle Parcel. You know, when staff first proposed a, a plan for the Bottle Parcel, it was a business park, you know, with offices. And, you know, myself, I think the mayor, and maybe some others basically said, "Well, what about housing? Why can't you put housing there?" And I'm glad to see that, you know, in the four years since that Business Park proposal came in, that, you know, it's finally going to be housing for homeless. I mean, we heard about the Wellness Center. You know, I haven't been quietly supporting, I've been loud and proud on that, right? You know, I knocked on doors, making sure it passed, I went to forums and talked about it. You know, I went up with, with Zach and Mayor Ashcraft to the state, where we were going to fight to defend it when we thought the state was going to take it away. So, we got to be strong on those, and we got to be out front, and we got to lead on those issues. You know, as far as services, I think council member Desog also talked about some of those as well. You know, when I was on council, we brought in Operation Dignity, and we put in the parking meters. It's not going to raise a ton load of money, you know, but any little bit helps provide services. You know, and one thing we also did, I don't know if it's homeless-related, but, you know, providing money, mental health grants for Alameda Unified School District to help out kids having mental health issues. And, you know, a lot of folks that do have mental health issues are homeless, so that helps prevent it from the, from happening.
Thank you. All right, so. Okay, all right. So now, oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, sorry. Now, Ms. Jensen. Oh, oh, Ms. Gross, sorry.
It's been a long day. So, in terms of homelessness, I think that Jim hit the nail on the head in terms of, you know, it is much easier to prevent homelessness than it is to solve for once somebody becomes homeless. One of the reasons is because there are endless barriers to becoming housed again. And I think sometimes we are not as aware as we need to be. When I worked at the Alameda Housing Authority, there was a person who was dealing with homelessness, and they came up on the list, and we were going to offer them housing. Trying to find them was a nightmare, because they did not have a permanent address, and the P.O. box that they once had was no longer there. Trying to track them down meant reaching out to the emergency contact on their list, and trying to get mail to them, and trying to find somebody who could get to them to say, "Hey, we have something available to you." That person had been on the list for five years at that point, and their opportunity to get housed was going to slip through their fingers because we couldn't get a hold of them. So, in terms of what we do to address homelessness, we prevent it in the first place and make sure that we have the staff necessary to do that kind of outreach. And if we need to change policy around things, and this is Housing Authority, which is separate from the city, but if, you know, policy needs to change, and there needs to be a little bit more leeway in the seven to 15 days you have to respond to a piece of mail, because we're dealing with people who may not be housed and may not have an address, those are kinds of things that I would like to see happen. I would also like to see the pilot program for UBI be expanded, because for people who are at the margins, you know, $100 might not mean a lot to you if you are doing well, but if you are really struggling, that $100 is the difference between you eating and not in a night. And so, those are the kinds of things I would also like to see expanded in the city of Alameda.
Thank you. So, now we will move to closing statements. No? Ah, I see. All right. So, one last question. How will you keep the cost of living in Alameda affordable to prevent longtime residents from being priced out and forced to move? And we'll begin with Ms. Gross.
Ooh, that's, that's a tough one. I am definitely somebody who thinks about that a lot. This is a place that I love, it's a place that I grew up, it's a place that I would like to raise a family one day, and am afraid I may not be able to do that, in part because of the increasing costs. I also support my mother, and so I'm also thinking about that and what happens to her. So, in terms of how we make Alameda a place that is not pushing people out, I think that we do need to have additional support for people, especially people who are living on fixed incomes. I think that, you know, UBI is one way to do that. But I think also thinking about what we're building, when we're building new housing. I was really excited to see that in the draft housing element, 42% of that new housing was for low or very low-income people. Another 16% of it is for people who are in the middle. So, one of the So one of the ways that you, you know, make Alameda a place that people can remain in is you build the housing necessary for them to stay here. And I think you continue to do things like protect renters from exorbitant increases. I think that that has had a positive impact on stabilizing the city and allowing people who live here now to stay. But I think there's also something to be said for how we support homeowners, because I think sometimes we get this idea that every homeowner is really well-off, and that is not always the case. And so we also have to be thinking about how we can protect homeowners in town who are not, you know, rolling in money, so that they can also stay here. Because I think it's important for our community to have people at various income levels. I think it makes a place that is more pleasant to be in. I think that it creates a more positive environment, and I think having that kind of diversity of income, but also racial backgrounds, is crucial to Alameda continuing to be a thriving city.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Desog.
Oh, great. I think the real crux of the question is about housing affordability. And so in the city of Alameda, any new development is required by ordinance and state law to set aside 15% as permanently affordable. Through what's called the density bonus, if the developer increases the amount of affordable above the minimum required from 15%, increases it by one percentage point to 16%. For that one percentage point increase, they are then allowed to build 20% more market rate housing. I have, that's always been a pet peeve. I think for the luxury of being able to build 20% more market rate housing, you got to build more than one percentage point more than what the density bonus. So that's one policy area that I hope to work on. But I think we also have to work with our state legislators in that area. Another policy area, it goes back to why I think it's important. I'm not saying all of our 5,300 arena housing should be at Alameda Point. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is, we should concentrate it there, because at Alameda Point, we set aside 25%. That's 10 percentage points above the 15% minimum. So at Alameda Point, we set aside 25% as affordable. So that's one of the reasons why. So that's why, as a policy, that's why I'm kind of focusing, concentrating more housing at Alameda Point, in addition to the transit connection. So I just want to make sure, so those are two policy things that I certainly want to work on. I think other affordable housing strategies that we need to work on is, we need to definitely work with our mom-and-pop landlords, so that we can encourage the Section 8 program throughout the city of Alameda, and that will allow people to live throughout Alameda, especially close to schools. But, you know, you have to work with the mom-and-pop landlords with that.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Odie.
Well, thank you. Well, recognizing that over half of Alameda's population are renters, you know, I think the key to that is making sure we protect our renters, and that's something that I've been a leader on. You know, protecting them from rent evictions, you know, where people would just raise the rent astronomical amounts, and then people would be forced to move out. Or maybe just, you know, doing the opposite, right, and just evicting them for no cause, so they could raise the rent to some new tenant. So we have those protections. You know, I think Hannah mentioned, you hit the nail on the head, you hit the nail on the head on a lot of this. So I'll just echo, associate with your comments. But, you know, we have a lot of mom-and-pop, you know, decent landlords in Alameda that are renting below-market, and they're not jacking up the rents. But yet, they're the ones that have a lot of issues with repairs. So, I mean, I think there's a way the city could help them with those repairs, without passing that on to their tenants, who can't really afford it that much anyway. So I think that's helpful. And I think the whole discussion on, you know, affordable housing for everybody at all income levels is important. It just has an example, we have that property on Webster and Taylor, right? You know, it's a parking lot, and now it's been activated into a nice cultural space. But, you know, the way that our rules are structured, you know, we had 1,700-square-foot apartments that would have been rented for $2,000, $2,500, or $3,000. Who's going to pay that to live in an apartment that's two stories on Webster Street? When instead of having, you know, a 1,700-square-foot apartment, we could have had three 600-square-feet apartments that actually would be affordable, right? So I think those are the things that, you know, we need to look at as a council. And, you know, the whole Section 8 thing, I think, is something that needs to be looked at. I knocked on the door of somebody's house over in the new Island High thing, and she said she was homeless, and she was on the waiting list for 20 years. She's from Alameda, and she's been on the waiting list 20 years. These are things we need to stop, and these are things we need to fix.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Jensen.
That is a good point, Mr. Odie. And it's actually true that people who are homeless are very, they have a low chance of getting housing. Councilmember Carol Fife in Oakland recently mentioned that the city of Oakland had just released 15 units of housing for 10,000, around 10,000 homeless individuals. And that's not okay. We need to do much, much better than that. I think in Alameda, we do have, we do have the rent, we have a lot of renters. And Alameda has done a good job in just cause, and in ensuring that rents can't be raised by huge amounts, and keeping people who are renting able to pay their rent. And that's very important. Unfortunately, I think also that, well, I mean, let me say that I think some of the changes that have happened now with the repeal, or the state's actions to eliminate the Measure A provisions are going to make it easier for people to have homes that they can rent, they can make into a duplex, and they can rent out, or they can add an ADU to rent out. And that's important, and the city needs to support those types of things. They need to support, allow people who do that to make two units out of one, to get a subsidy, or to encourage them to make it affordable. That's really important. And I think the city can do more, too, to look at housing, look at spaces and buildings that are not being used for housing, that are vacant, that are blighted, and establish a blight tax or a blight penalty for owners of buildings that are paying very low property taxes because of Proposition 13, and ensure that they're using the buildings that they have that are available for housing, and using them to house people, rather than letting them be just deteriorate. So those are a couple of things that I would do on the City Council. I think that the homeless issue is huge, and we really need to pay attention to that, number one.
Thank you. So now we come to closing statements, and you'll each have three minutes. We'll go in seating order, so we'll begin with Mr. Odie.
Again. Well, thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank the fellow candidates. I think this is the first time we've been face-to-face in person. And, you know, I recognize a lot of faces in the crowd. Some of us have been on the same side, some of us have been on the other side of things. But truly, it is good to see your faces again. And, you know, there's the one thing I miss, you know, is the interaction and, you know, seeing people. And I appreciate that. You know, my name's Jim Odie. I was honored to serve as your Councilmember for six years. I would like to return to the Council, you know, and continue leading on the priorities that I led on for six years. And I think we've all talked about a lot of those today, right? Housing. We need to increase affordability, or options at all affordability levels, right? We need to make sure we continue to protect our tenants. We need to make sure that we provide services for our homeless, things like the Wellness Center. You know, the other thing I think we need to do, and I have a strong record of doing this, is protecting our core services. You know, it was discussed that the city really has a few things to do, right? Police, fire, libraries, parks, public works. I mean, those are the things that you all trust the city to do. You know, I was honored to support the Community Paramedicine Program. And, you know, for five or six years, we couldn't get anyone else to help pay for it, and it went down to one person. But you know what? Now that's the care team. That was the precursor to the care team. And everyone loves the care team. So that just shows you what you can do when you're persistent and you stick to it. You know, police funding. You know, I was proud to provide funding for the entire request that the police department have asked for for six years. And I don't think anything has been cut. Tony can probably talk about that. But, you know, we continue to prioritize that. We prioritize fire safety inspectors. You know, we prioritize opening the library and providing more books and more literature. You know, and the last thing, again, if we're on Side A or Side B of an issue, I think we all care about Alameda. We all love Alameda, and we want to make it a great place to live for ourselves and our children and our descendants. You know, one of my kids lives here, and he can only live here because of rent control. The other one can't afford to live here and move to Portland, Oregon. But for those that stay here, you know, we need to make sure we keep up their quality of life. And whether that's arts funding, whether that's parks, whether that's putting in climate change issues like DePape Park, you know, or whether that's, you know, just making sure our business districts are thriving, which they're struggling now. I mean, those are the things that I'm going to prioritize. Those are the things I did prioritize. And you can look at my record. You know, I've made a few mistakes, and I apologize for those, and I've learned from those. But on the things where I haven't made a mistake, I've led for you. I've led in the things you care about, and that's what I would do again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, thank you very much for everyone for having come out here, because I understand you were also here earlier for the mayoral debate. So you guys are real standouts in terms of, you know, the efforts that you have made to help improve our city. So I want to express my appreciation for that. As you well know, you know, I am Tony Desog. I am a Councilmember in the city of Alameda. And I do believe that in the last four years, there have been profound things that have occurred in our nation that have also kind of redounded here locally. Nationally, you know, we are all touched by the George Floyd incident in Minneapolis. And that did force changes here in the city of Alameda. But rather than, you know, putting up our hands and saying, we're not going to change, we're going to stay the way that we are since we were first incorporated in 1854, rather than put up our hands and do that, we said, you know what? We're going to embrace change where it makes sense. And so what I am proud about is, over the last four years, is having joined my council colleagues, and making sure that we reform the way in which we do policing, particularly when it comes to nonviolent, mental health-related 911 calls, where we now send out, you know, mental health-trained professionals, the paramedics that former Councilmember Odie referred to, sending them out in conjunction with assistance from trained medical professionals. And so I think that is a substantial change that will be talked about and looked positively for generations. But by the same token, you know, there was a lot of energy to reduce our police funding by almost 40%. Fortunately, I think council as a whole, we realize that, you know, the city of Alameda, we're not going to cut our police by 40%, even as much as we were moved by the George Floyd incident. And I think people understood that. Even our police committee understood the importance of our policing. And I think our police reform committee encouraged us to make sure to work towards the 88 officers, and we are working in that direction. So we have, there have been substantial changes that have occurred nationally that we have responded to, I think, in a responsible way. Other changes that have occurred, you know, nationally, especially in Washington, DC, there was a lot of, you know, rhetorical discord. Doesn't matter if you're Republicans or Democrats or whatever, but there just was. But I think all of us on City Council made sure to work our best, to work deliberatively, professionally, with not just each other, Councilmembers, but also with our city staff in the last four years, and also with our community. So I'm glad that we were able to keep our community together over these tumultuous past four years, and implement significant historic changes. And I look forward to working to continue to improve our quality of life.
Ms. Gross.
So I would like to just echo the sentiment of being grateful that all of you showed up. That this is what you chose to do with your Saturday afternoon, I think speaks to the fact that you all want to be aware of what and who you're voting for, that you care about the state of Alameda, as we all do, and are committed to making sure that Alameda reflects your values. My values, as somebody who grew up here, I think are really rooted in a strong sense of community. And I think that that is one of the things that we are really fortunate to have here, is an incredible sense of community. I went to public school here from kindergarten through 12th grade. I went to Washington, which is now Myalyn, and then I went to Encinal. We talked about arts earlier. I completely forgot that I had any participation in that, because I've kind of blocked it out, because that's not the way my brain works. But I was in the band at both places. There was a robust music program, a kindergarten music program at Washington when I was there, and then I was in the marching band at Encinal. And those are the kinds of things that I would really, you know, like to see us as a community show more pride in. I mean, we always had this massive band competition, and I think it was, you know, one of the highlights of the city of Alameda, is being able to welcome all of these other bands who are, you know, marching through town. But, you know, my vision for Alameda really includes public safety. And I think one of the ways you get to a place that is safe, and continues to be safe, and Alameda is relatively safe, if we're being honest, is that you continue to provide the services that allow people to thrive, right? And so that is continuing to have a strong public education system, continuing to provide protections for people who are renters, continuing to support businesses, local businesses. I think it has been, you know, in Alameda, it has been really astounding to see how much local businesses support schools, support local initiatives. They donate and are always ready to step up and help. And so I think we also need to be willing to step up and help them. A lot of them are still struggling with the effects of the pandemic. And I think that, you know, one of the ways that you create a place that is, you know, welcoming and people enjoy being in, is by having businesses where you can walk in and say, I know the people there because they've owned this business for this long, and they have this amazing staff. And so we incentivize business owners to stay here, and we give them the funding necessary to do that. But overall, I think that Alameda has made some progress. I would like to see more. Councilmember Desog mentioned the Police Reform and Racial Equity Committee. I was on those committees, and there were a lot of recommendations that came out of those committees, some of which have been implemented, but a lot of which haven't. I would love to see there be community oversight of our police, and those are the kinds of things that I would push for if elected. Again, I really thank you for all coming today. I appreciate having the chance to talk to you about, you know, what's important to me and why I love this place. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, everyone, for coming. And goodbye, Janet. I see my school board colleague, Janet Gibson, and my former school board colleague, Trish Spencer. So I've been part of the institutions that make Alameda what it is. I've been part of the school district on the school board for eight years. And we went from being under, potentially being taken over when I joined the school district, to having a fiscally sound budget, and a leader superintendent, and passing one of the first local curricula to establish respect and trust and support for all Alameda's diverse students and families. And I'm very proud of that. And right now, I'm on the board of the Alameda Healthcare District, and my colleagues on that board have appointed me, along with the Board of Supervisors appointing me, to the Board of Alameda Health System, the $1.2 billion public health safety net for Alameda County. And I'm very proud of my work there for the past eight years to improve programs, healthcare programs, to keep Alameda Hospital available, and ensure that all of the commercial insurance companies are available and providing insurance and coverage at Alameda Hospital, so that if you happen to have to go there, there won't be co-pays, and there won't be a lot of out-of-pocket costs, because we do have agreements with all the commercial insurers. Alameda Hospital is a great resource. We have a stroke center that was just recognized by the American Heart Association. And our grade went from a D when I joined the Alameda Healthcare District Board by the Leapfrog Group to a B this past year, and it'll be an A hopefully next year. So those, the resources, our education system, our healthcare system, I've been proud and happy to have made accomplishments and worked for both of those big agencies. And that's where I am. I'm a public servant. I've worked for the big agencies that support Alameda residents, and I believe in Alameda values. I believe that we do have, as Hannah said, we do have community values, and we do support each other. And one of the things that I'll do, that I want to do on the City Council, and one of the reasons I'm running for the City Council, is because I've been a part of, as I mentioned, I've reported to the boards as an employee of Oakland, as a federal employee policymaker, and I've been on the boards and received the staff reports. And one of the things I want to do that hasn't been discussed today is ensure that you all can come to City Council meetings, and come at 5:00, or 6:00, or 7:00, and hear an issue, and be able to talk about it. So that you can come and have your voice heard, rather than having to wait till midnight, and then have the issue, whatever it was on the agenda, be postponed because the City Council couldn't get around to hearing it or learning more about it. So I think that is critical, and I think that we need to really make some big changes in the agenda management for our City Council, and we need to make some big changes in getting the voices of Alameda residents heard by everyone. And that's what I'll do as a City Councilmember. Thank you for coming today. And please think about me and check out my website, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Alameda Post, I want to thank all of the candidates for being here and for all of our audience for sticking it out and making this investment in our future. And that wraps up our forum, our very first forum. Thank you so much. Good evening.